Members, please be seated. We will begin the final session of today. This session is on labor. And may I remind members once again that if you want to speak, please press the request to speak button first. And if members want to refer to the written replies from the administration, please quote the reply serial number on the topmost right-hand corner. Secretary, would you like to make a brief introduction?
Chairman, my speaking notes are very long, but just like the last session, I would just be spending five minutes to give you some information. Recurrent spending on labor and manpower development is estimated this year to be 1,740 million, an increase of 320 million over the revised budget last year. Now, we are in full employment, but in terms of promoting employment among the young people with low education qualification and PWDs etc., we still need to do more. We have a number of programs, for example, the Youth Employment Training Program and Youth Work Experience and Training Scheme, Employment Program for the middle-aged and work orientation and placement schemes. We are going to enhance the subsidy amount, say, for YPTP and YWETS. We will increase the amount from $2,000 to $3,000, provided that the salaries is $6,000 or above a month. And we are going to take a step further in relation to employing PWDs. Employers will be given a maximum of $5,500 per month for two months, so altogether it will amount to over 10,000 and around 10,000 people would benefit from the programs. And the job center will be set up in Tongchung. And Tongchung will be our targeted area and we are identifying a location in Tongchung. We hope that these services can be provided to housing estates in Tongchung. And the work incentive transport subsidy scheme will be enhanced. As members may note, since January, we have adopted the dual-track approach. And then, starting this July, eligible applicants may apply for subsidy and we anticipate more applicants under this dual-track approach, and this is in response to members' requests. And for labor relations, the situation has been stable. The rate of conciliation stood at 73%. We will continue to enhance employment relationship or labor relations on protection for members for illegal and unlawful dismissal under the employment ordinance. We plan to introduce a bill. We have taken members through the bill at the panel meeting. I won't repeat the points. We are going to introduce the amendment bill later this year. On paternity leave, we will also expedite the progress. We are engaging in legislative work. We want to introduce a bill into Legco as soon as possible. Statutory minimum wage, SMW. It has been in place and this year, in May, the rate will be increased to $30 and around 213,000 people, low-paid employees, would be covered, according to our estimates. And the implementation of SMW, since its implementation, we have conducted inspections. And overall speaking, the compliance situation has been satisfactory. Only 144 cases have been reported as suspected cases and we issued altogether 34 summonses of eight cases and they were convicted under these summonses. Now, on illegal workers, we also set up our effort. We have joint operations with the police and immigration department. We conducted 241 joint operations and we will continue to remain stringent in our enforcement action. And for the protection of wages on the Insolvent's Fund, PWIF, as members may note, we have amended the legislation. And we have revised the ordinance to expand the scope to cover pay-for-and-take-in annual leave and statutory holidays. It has come into operation since last year and the percentage has dropped by about 20%. And we also it also shows our effort in combating abuse of the PWIF.
Regarding standard working hours, as I announced two days yesterday, the committee is already started and then I just got two roles. First, to follow up on the study by the Labor Department last year. Second, to start an in-depth and informed debate in the administration because this is going to have wide implications on the economy and the labor market. So there must be a lot of discussions in order to forge consensus. And then we also advise the CE on our policies on working hours and our positioning, including whether we should legislate to specify standard working hours. Occupational safety and health is also among our priorities. Well, with maintenance and inspection of buildings and windows, we expect more minor works to start and the Labor Department has a series of measures. For major infrastructure projects, liaison will start early to ensure good safety management and safety audits will be done more stringently. We will maintain very close contact with the sector. Manpower development, the ERB will continue to play its role. And we know that the budget has announced that the levy on domestic, foreign domestic helpers, employees would be removed and there would be sufficient injection into the ERB fund to ensure that it has stable income. And we will enhance the services of the ERB in order that we can meet the needs of our labor market and will enhance the competitiveness and employability of our low-income workers. It offers 130,000 training places, I mean, the ERB. And then there will be an additional 40,000 training places when necessary. It will help to enhance the skills and employability of low-income workers. And we've also got tailor-making courses for people with special training needs and we've started internship training for the hairdressing industry and we can also cover the catering and retail industries in the future. So I'm more than happy to answer questions from members and for operational or technical type of questions, my colleague from the department would supplement. All right, 11 members, five minutes each. Dr. Brazila Leng, Chai Yun Hai, Alice Mac, Pun Shiu Ping, Frederick Feng, Kwok Wai Keng, Wong Kwok Hing, Lee Che Young, John Kwok Chu, Tan Kapiu, and Gary Fan. Dr. Brazila Leng, thank you, Chairman. My question relates to reply number 067 and 124. In reply to 067, the secretary said that there is a guideline issued for bricks, brick rest period so that workers would not be too tied recently with the HIT worker strike. I have talked to them and usually they have to work for 12 hours or even up to 16 hours if they want to earn more. Is it true that the guide on rest breaks do not have any, it's not binding at all? And they've told me that it's not convenient for them to get down from the heavy plant. So I'd like to know whether the guide is binding, is it useful at all? And then point two of reply 124, it is mentioned that in our types of works where the work environment is hot and humid, you would enhance inspection to ensure that workers would not be exhausted and that they would not just pass out. Well, my grandfather worked in similar industries. I think even for the contractors now, if the principle of projects do not increase wages, it's also difficult for them to raise a pay. Well, I've talked with workers, they want someone to media and to help so that they can start work again soon. So they are very eager that somebody will come out to help. I have the feeling the administration has been passive or at least not very proactive in helping the labor, the employers and employees to conciliate. I'd like to understand more. Thank you. Concerning the strike at the container terminal, I'm very concerned about the working hours and I have closely monitored the development of the incident. Our colleagues have been following up and in the mediation process, we want the employer to be mindful of occupational health and safety. Now, the guide on rest breaks is not statutory binding. It's just a guideline for employers' reference. Regarding heat stroke in construction sites and so forth, we have discussed that a number of times in manpower panel meetings. We've discussed with SITR and also EDA. When the weather is hot, there should be sufficient water provided and shade and there should be appropriate bricks for workers. The construction industry has started, has already got this understanding between construction sites and associations and workers. I would like to invite the deputy commissioner from the Labor Department responsible for occupational safe and health, Mr. Leng, to supplement. Thank you.
Thank you. For the number of heat strokes. Well, for high-risk workplaces, including container terminals, we do take special enforcement action in 2010 and 2011. We had 628 and 536 inspections respectively. Eight warning letters and three warning letters were issued in 2010 and 2011 respectively. So as you can see, the situation has improved. From eight warning letters, it dropped to three. In 2012, 456 inspections were made, no warning letters issued because in the past few years, we have done a lot of publicity on the prevention of heat stroke and also take enforcement action. And we've seen marked improvement in container terminals. Mr. Leng, do you have any supplement, not really from me? Secretary, do you have anything to add? But there is only one second left. Doesn't matter, please go on.
We're starting from day one of the strike. Labor Relations Division of the Labor Department has got four colleagues mediating between the employer, the employees, and also the trade unions. So it's not that we have been passive. We have been very proactive in intervening. We do what is right at the moment. Ms. Chan Yeh Hsuen, I don't think this is true. I think you are among the missing persons on the internet. When faced with a large-scale labor dispute, it is important that you step in as early as possible. And this time, this is very problematic. We talk about labor relations. Well, for the HIT, the HIT is one thing, but many employees faced unequal situation in their bargaining power. The government must face up to the problem we have left behind and we also try patei collective bargaining mechanism. We've talked about this many times. And we have, we hope that after the HIT incident, the government can rethink. When a face of a strike at the container terminal, you have to handle the situation. You should not say that everything is fine as far as labor relations is concerned. So you must do something about collective bargaining. Ms. Chan Yeh Hsuen will talk about the draft estimates, not about policies or collective bargaining. I know, but this requires money. If labor relations are so bad, you must reserve budget for this area whereas they haven't. All right, the second issue is about spending. They're going to set up a committee on standard working hours. This is a very important bureau. Workers are working unduly long hours and you still continue the study. This is very different from CFI's claim that legislation should be done as soon as possible. You must have money in your provision to do something concrete. But I have checked the whole draft estimates to no avail. Yes, I know my time is up soon. All right, collective bargaining and standard working hours. Secretary, what is your role in these two issues? You must have a timetable. You cannot say that it cannot be done within this term of government. No, we have talked about standard working hours for a long time, so please give me a reply. Chairman, collective bargaining is not about the draft estimates. Should I answer that question? Of course you should because it's about your budget. Well, we'll talk about the draft estimates. I cannot force you to reply. I can only remind colleagues what this meeting is about. This is not about policy. Exactly, this is not a panel meeting. All right, I'll just say a few words. Collective bargaining is a highly controversial issue, as we all know. We must have a consensus in society before we can proceed. And on standard working hours, Ms. Chan said that we have not reserved resources for that. This is not true. We have increased manpower in our Labor Department. There are colleagues serving as the secretariat of the committee just like the one for Commission on Statutory Minimum Wage because the committee has a three-year term and the work is important. The setting up of the Standard Working Hours Committee marked the government's concern for this. And the LAB, no, no, secretary, it's not that I want to stop you, but in the interest of time, I want to put this very simple question to you. You mentioned labor relations. In addition to mediation or conciliation, it is important that you have the collective bargaining mechanism. You must have provision in the draft estimates to do that. Yes, you have set up the Standard Working Hours Committee, but it's just like the nuclear bomb threatened by North Korea. So my question is about draft estimates, but you should be talking about his draft estimates. Well, you cannot refer to the policy. Well, Ms. Chan, you are very experienced legislator. Secretary. Well, the committee has just started its work and yet to come up with these recommendations. So resources should come in the form of secretariat support. There are colleagues in the Labor Department to provide secretariat support. That is the most important. Well, what are the policies even? If we have the policy, it's just like SMW. The government has the basic policy, but you really need manpower. You need money to spend that. There is no such philosophy in your draft estimates at all. Ms. Alice Mac, I may refer to reply 119. A family-friendly employment measures and how are you going to promote that? Now, maternity leave and also post maternal protection for women should be part of your family-friendly policies, but we see nothing in the budget or draft estimates to talk about protection for female employees. I think at another meeting of the Legco, when we talked about manpower policies, the PS said that there would be a review of post maternal protection so as to safeguard the interests of female employees. Why is it absent here? And you only talk about providing money for publicizing family-friendly employment practices, but you do not refer to the details and there is nothing for protection of pregnant women. So what do you mean? PS, let me supplement what I said at that FC meeting. I said that the Labor Department has been a promoter of family-friendly policies. And then some basic protection is already found in the relevant legislation such as maternity leave. I did not propose to review the provision of maternity leave or other protections. So you have no intention to do that? But I said if there are any comments or suggestions to promote employment of women, we will discuss in the Women's Commission. So if there are any measures to promote employment of women, I would refer to the Women's Commission. All right, if you felt, if you feel that what I said last time were not proposals, let me tell you that they are my suggestions. Family-friendly policies should include full-pay maternity leave and protection for women after giving birth. And then according to the International Labor Organization, the period of maternity leave should be prolonged. This is my very clear comment and I think many women organizations have expressed this. The PS said that if there are suggestions, the Women's Commission would discuss. So to regard that as my suggestions. All right, all suggestions are mentioned by Ms. Alice Mac will be referred to the Women's Commission for their full discussion. Ms. Mac, any follow-up? So what I said at the last meeting, the CS was here and you were here. So what I said were not considered as suggestions and you had no intention to follow up. What about the proposals I just mentioned? Do you regard them as my proposals? Well, I have read the minutes of the House Committee meeting. On family-friendly policies, what I said was the current legislation provides a very good basis for such protection and any proposals or suggestions from legislators and other members will be referred to the Women's Commission. So other suggestions that can be referred to the WOC. But what about myself? I already made such comments last time. I've also checked the minutes. So because in the secretary's speech this time, there is no mention of employment of women. All right, your views are certainly regarded as views. Rest assured, we'll follow up. Please give us a room. We cannot do it overnight. We have to think through the measures and proposals. I think at the previous session, I talked about childcare services and encouragement of employment among women. Well, they are a package and all these will be discussed. Well, from the reply to the question, we can see the money you're going to spend to promote family-friendly policies, but the actual measures are important. Women are usually homemakers and homecarers. You must take good care of them. We hope that the Women's Commission and also the Bureau can review protection for women. Mr. Pun Shiu Ping. The secretary's speaking notes include promoting labor relations and that has been a rise of 5% in the number of claims. And for the HIT strike, we also hope that it can be resolved as early as possible. And colleague talked about collective bargaining, whether that can be implemented in Hong Kong. And according to the speaking notes, the administration will only organize tripartite committees or launch APIs. I'd like to know whether it would do more. And also like to follow up on reply number 007. A question by Mr. John Kwok Chu, importation of labor. The question was whether there would be public consultation. And according to the reply, the Labor Advisory Board with equal number of representatives from the employer-employee groups is consulted on the visual SLS applications. I'd like to know if there is no consensus within the LAB, will you remain the status quo that is no importation of labor? And then reply 66.
Another question is about the number of warnings and number of prosecutions in relation to the security services industry in relation to inspection in the light of the statutory minimum wage. That's lower than the retail sector. So what is the criteria? Would you be focusing on those that have a more serious situation? And then reply 96. And that's about the occupational health and safety figures. In 2013, it is estimated that there will be 113,400 visits. In 2012, the actual number was 128,000. I want to know why you haven't followed the actual number in arriving at the estimated number. Why is the estimated number a smaller one? Secretary. Well, first of all, labor relations, an increase of 5%. But then that's about the number of claims. There's the increase in the number of claims. For larger-scale incidents that is involving 20 or more workers, the number has decreased by 8%. So offsetting, number of claims has increased, but then for larger labor disputes on the whole, there were fewer of them. But of course, you are concerned about the recent story. We are equally concerned. But we have to take preventive measures. We want to address the problems at source. Therefore, we have been working via the tripartite structure. That is, at the industry level, we have consultative committees and we have also got clubs for human resources. The LAB is also, of course, a very important forum. Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman. For the importation of labor, perhaps I should answer the first question about promotion of labor relations. Well, in fact, we say that it is steady, it is stable. This is because we have looked at the number of labor disputes handled by us as well as the number of claims. We can see that there has been a decreasing trend and therefore we say that it is steady. When there is a labor dispute, we will try to intervene at an early stage. It also depends on the nature of the dispute, the number of employees, the aspirations and demands as well as the complexity. We will make adjustments accordingly and deploy manpower and manpower strategy. For the importation of labor, Mr. Pun wants to know what happened if it is a case of six votes against six votes. Well, it is the Labor Advisory Committee and then the employers and employees will make suggestions, recommendations to the Commissioner of Labor. Seldom have we seen this before. But even if it does arise, I think we have to understand that the LAB has certain criterion. For the low-skilled workers, we want to look at the median wage. And for that trade, we want to know whether for a few weeks we have not been able to recruit anybody to establish whether there is genuine shortage and the Commissioner will make a decision accordingly. Number of visits for the security services industry as to why it appears that by comparison, there have been more compliance cases. I think the compliance rate is quite good. For the catering industries and the retail outlets, there are more establishments. So relatively speaking, there are more of them and more visits. Next, KK Feng, Mr. Chairman. 017. There's about the number of accidents in the manufacturing industries. Well, falling from height, fall of person from height, second, electrical shock, they were fatal. I want to know about the reason. Is it because of the lack of proper education and so there were relatively more fatal cases? And I want to know if the administration has got any measures to deal with the situation. Commissioner. For a person from height. and also electrical shock or contact with electricity or electric discharge. We have done a lot of work. Like in the case of contact with electricity or electric discharge, we have been in contact with ninety thousand registered electricians and their contractors. At construction sites, we have also carried out a lot of publicity. Falling from height, again, we have worked a lot. We have done a lot with the contractors by way of publicity. We have also asked family members who has got a family member suffering from an industrial accident to send out the personal message that it has serious consequences. But how come that we have more fatal cases, said Mr Feng? Yes, we can do a lot by way of education. But it all depends on the high level of awareness among the workers. We've seen an increase in the number. The rate of increase is not great, but still it is on the high side. Twenty cases of falling from height. Perhaps this is due to the larger number of mega projects. Sometimes when they have to rush, then the safety measures are not followed. And for facilities, we have also talked to the O S H C. Subsidies have been provided so as to acquire the safety facilities. We have seen some cases of falling from height. Half of the cases have seen workers dying from accidents when they are standing at a height of no more than two meters. It's not a matter of wearing the safety harness. It's a matter of people standing on a ladder and they fall. Next month, we'll see a large scale publicity campaign. He's using up all my time, but I still have another question. We're going to provide a subsidy. We're going to emphasise the concept of a safe work platform. So that if somebody falls, he won't fall from a height of two to three meters. He will at most be falling onto the platform. I think one fatal case would be too many. So you need to make sure that your efforts are effective. One zero six, one zero five. That's about the number of ethnic minorities at work as well as the number of new arrivals coming to Hong Kong and seeking jobs and getting a job. Only seven percent of the ethnic minorities can't get a job. Can't get a job. And then fifteen percent for the new arrivals. So they want to get a job, but then there are only a very small number of jobs. So seven out of one hundred of the ethnic minorities can get a job, even though they want to seek a job. They are eager to get a job, but how come that the L D can't help them to get a job? Is it being outrageous? Commissioner. For the new arrivals as well as the ethnic minority job seekers. At our job centres, we do have special arrangements. But then the figure is on the low side, very low. I'm talking about the arrangements. We try our best to find jobs that would suit the language ability of the ethnic minorities. Say for example, because sometimes they may have some language barriers. So we're trying to find appropriate jobs for them. In the year past, we have been bearing in mind the language characteristics of the E M's and try to find jobs suitable for them. Next, Mr Kwakwai Keng. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just now, the secretary talked about promotion of labour relations. He said that personal claims have seen an increase of five percent. Larger scale labour disputes have seen a decrease of eight percent. Is it because of this? So manpower has been redeployed to somewhere else. So that in relation to the terminal strike, the L D has been slow in the reaction. We have waited for almost two weeks before we see any full action taken by the L D. Is it because of the lack of resources? And so the efficiency has been affected. And then mediation, the success rate is seventy percent. There is conciliation. Is it timely? Though eventually they have been successfully dealt with by way of conciliation. And then question or rather replies zero four eight. And that's about standard working hours. In the reply, it is said that the standard working hours committee will be set up. And then there's no way to tell when they will be completed, the work will be completed. And you can't tell about the timing of any legislative proposal or how it would keep the public informed of this work. So is it a departure from the C E S pledge? And is it a departure from the establishment of the S W H C, which is supposed to move in the direction of legislation? I think the government has already got a position known. That is, we are moving towards legislation. For the eight point three six million dollars to be spent on this portfolio, are you going to have A P Is in the funds right in the case of the O A L A? So that the community would know more about the case of standard working hours? And then for zero four nine, that's about seventeen days statutory holidays. In the reply, it is said that in twenty thirteen fourteen, you are going to carry out a study concerning the data. When are you going to be ready with the results so that the legal can have a discussion? Zero five seven. Importation of foreign labour. In the reply, it has been said that under the supplementary labour scheme, the nature of the work as well as the working environment may be less attractive to the local workers. And so we are not able to have a tailor made training programme. So I want to know about the logistics that you have adopted to assess the situation so as to justify an S L S on the basis that it is not attractive to the local workers in terms of the pay as well as the working conditions. So what are the criteria? And then zero five nine, that's about youth work. And there is this cyber pilot cyber youth outreach project. You're running out of time. Yes, I know. I come to my last one. Two point five two million dollars to be spent. One and a half years have already passed. When are you coming back for a midterm review? Secretary. I'll answer some of the questions to be supplemented by the directors of the commissioners. We haven't cut manpower just because there are fewer claims in the light of the strike at the terminal. When it broke out, four officers went to the terminal to deal with the situation. Three ladies and one male officers. We have to do justice to them. They have been working very hard, running around to help. For the eight million plus to be spent on standard working hours, we have to carry out certain studies. In the three years to come, the committee has to promote the awareness in the community so as to facilitate a public debate. So there will be publicity, there will be education. We need some resources to support the work in this direction. Statutory holidays. The Census and Statistic Department is analysing the data. Once we have got the outcome, we'll go to the L O B and then we'll come back to the manpower panel. For the outreach scheme that's under the S W D. It's a cyber youth outreach project. It's supposed to run for three years. We've only started it for about a year's time. In due course, we'll go back to the W S P. It's a pilot project. If it is to become an standing item, we have to share the findings with you before we roll out, Commissioner. Zero five seven. For unattractive trades. We don't have hard and fast rules, but we can see that for work in R C H E's, you know that even if you offer the median wage on a long term basis, you never get enough people. I think it's obnoxious in nature. You know it from common sense and you have to do shift work, you have to work at night. So if there aren't enough local workers, we will allow workers to be imported. Wong Kwok Hing. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Two questions for the secretary, paragraph eleven and twelve. Legislating for statutory paternity leave. Can the government take the lead to allow subvented organisations and private corporations to give paternity leave to the employees? The legal secretariat have told me that legal staff can also get paternity leave. So secretary, you hold a key. In fact, for subvented welfare organisations under you, would you set the pace by allowing them to be entitled to paternity leave? And then O S H, reply twenty. Sorry, paragraph twenty. We want to cover the career drivers. Are you going to set aside resources to study this question? That is, the occupational safety and health of the career drivers. So will there be resources to carry out study? Two questions. Thank you, Mr Wong. For N G Os. We always hope that if resources permit, they should have family friendly practices, in particular, paternity leave. So before legislation, we'll continue to step up our reason with the N G Os. But we can't impose it on it because we haven't got extra resources for them. The legislation hasn't been passed, so we can't have extra resources for them. We can mostly advisory in nature. Some of them have already started. It's empty slogans. Chairman, it's not me, it's the secretary. For the secretary to say it without backing it up with resources, it is meaningless. What under you, they are under you. Ask them to do it first. Is it not possible to reimburse them? In the following financial year, the legal secretaries can do it. Why can't you do it? Well, the legal secretariat has its own consideration. With over a hundred N G Os, their circumstances are different. We can't have it being dealt with in a broad brush approach. Not everybody will be giving birth to a boy, girls as well. Commissioner. Extension of the occupational safety and health ordinance to the career drivers. We have already studied the case. It's not a matter of whether we haven't got the manpower. In June twenty ten or twenty twelve, we reported the outcome to the manpower panel. There was a paper on it. Our conclusion was that there are already are the legislation. Well, for drivers, it covers a lot. Chairman, I don't need the commissioner to waste my time. Let me tell him. At that time, the conclusion was that it would not be done. It is because it has got nothing to do with O S H of the workers.
And we're not happy with this reply and the panel did not agree. So the labour sector, especially drivers and labour unions, strongly urged the administration to keep up with the present circumstances instead of adhering to out to date policies. So I wonder if Commissioner could reconsider launching a review or a fresh without getting additional resources. Mr Wong Kwok Hing, I want to remind you that we are talking about estimates. Yes, but it has to do with estimates. No, it hasn't. You are talking about the policy. No, at the beginning, I asked whether funding will have to be sought. Well, you talked about labour policy, but anyway, I'll allow Commissioner to answer your question. Chairman, please don't waste my time. Please allow him to answer. I'm not wasting your time, but you are really getting off track. You keep on asking policies, especially policies that you don't agree with. I need to remind members that this is about discussion on estimates. Apart from the results announced in June twenty twelve and November twenty twelve in relation to a bus accident, we gave an account. For example, when we conducted a review in twenty twelve and with now in March twenty thirteen, we don't see an urgent need. We don't see a substantial change in circumstances for any change in our policy. Your time is up, Mr Lee Che Yan. Chairman, I have two questions, one on standard working hours committee. I think the secretary like to leave things to the end before he earned the credit and so that he can work for the next term of government. Just like standard working hours, well, he said that after the report, he has to set up a committee for review, for studies. And then another three years will be passed. By then, it will be too late to legislate on the matter. So the money would go to waste. So what's the purpose of setting up the standard working hours committee? Are you serving the next term of government? So you are doing all the work for next term of government. I am sorry to say that. Standard working hours committee, their work will take three years' time. So another three years after three years. How many three years are you going to waste? So a question for the secretary. Why does the standing, our standard working hours committee need three years? Because things will be left to the next term of government. So what are you doing during this term? Next question about the rest hours or breaks for dockers. My question for the Labour Department is this. Do you know that workers at the container terminal has no right to go to toilet or to have meals? What did you do during your previous inspections? I mentioned this point at the manpower panel meetings. I said that they are having problems with the lack of provision of toilets and meal breaks. So first of all, please tell me, in the past, did you know about it? Of course, now everybody in Hong Kong knows about it. But did you know in the past whether whether this situation has been going on? And does it mean that the occupational safety and health ordinance is meaningless? All the inspections you carried out have not resulted in discovery of these matters. Secretary, I'll defer to director to take the point on meal breaks. Standard working hours, we are all aware of the complexity of this issue. We covered this at the panel's meeting. We have, I won't repeat them. We have covered these points. It's a very complex issue and it will have far reaching implications on the labour market and the economy. There has to be in depth discussions. Last term, the Labour Department or the Bureau prepared a three hundred page report. According to the report, views from the sectors must be sought first. So three years is necessary. Of course, if they can expedite the progress, then they might finish work before the end of three years. They can raise, they can express their views to government anytime. The first step is to follow up on the report. The report has brought about a number of issues. So all these issues have to be discussed by the community and for consensus to be reached. And during the discussion of issues, there will be new ideas. We need to come up with a way forward. The third step is to propose a way forward for the administration. Okay, in brief, so you're serving, you're working for the next term of government. Not necessarily, perhaps better suggestions might come. Not necessarily, perhaps better suggestions might come up. Is legislation the only way out or not? Or that's even worse. Perhaps the community will have a consensus on an alternative which is better. Maybe there are unique circumstances in Hong Kong. The unique circumstances of Hong Kong is that our government is really bad. Mr. Lee Cheung Yan, please don't engage in dialogue with him. Please allow them to answer. Commissioner. In twenty twelve, we inspected the container terminal six hundred and forty times. We prosecuted in fifty-two cases and we issued three notices for improvement. And we inspected a number of areas in respect of operation of machinery. We checked whether the machinery was properly maintained, whether the tire, whether the tire was sufficiently inflated. And for the operators, we looked at the seating arrangement of, at the height of the seats. And on heat stroke, crane operators during their breaks may adjust the pace of the operation based on the volume of cargo containers. And meal breaks or breaks may be arranged. As for answering the nature's call, as I understand, the container terminal contractors have not imposed any requirement that forbids workers from leaving the compartment of the crane. But, well, as mentioned in yesterday's negotiation or consultation meeting, it's a matter of arrangement. Of course, it's a matter of arrangement. Mr. Lee Cheung Yan, your time is up. Yes, okay, Mr. Chiang Pock-si.
I request to speak. Mr. Chiang Pock-si, thank you. Zero nine five and zero seven five. Zero nine five is about YPTP and YWETS in twenty ten, eleven. The number of participants was twelve thousand, no, twenty eleven to twenty twelve. Nine thousand, twenty twelve, thirteen, no figures yet. But this seems the number is on the decline according to reply number seventy-five. And the government is going to increase the resources by one hundred and fifty million to two hundred million dollars to enhance the scheme. I'd like to know the details. The other question is about zero eight seven, about the employment of people with disabilities. I see that there were two thousand five hundred and twelve cases of PWD employees. I'd like to know whether they are successfully being employed or just successful application. And also for, according to the figures, there are over seven hundred employees earning three thousand or less, and they constituted the largest group. Commissioner. Maybe I will answer this question first, and then I would defer to Mrs. Soh for some supplementary information. Now, about the number of trainees under the YPTP and YWETS, they have registered a decline, and yet we're asking for more funding in twenty thirteen, fourteen. That is because we are going to roll out an initiative under which if an employer offers a job with a salary of over six thousand dollars to a young person, the subsidy to the employer will increase from two thousand to three thousand a month. And to encourage young people to work, we also have a requirement of one-month attachment, after which a subsidy will be given or allowance will be given to the trainee. So we have increased the economic or financial incentive. That is the reason. As for zero eight seven, the two thousand five hundred and twelve cases, they were about employment cases. As for the amount of below three thousand, I will invite Mrs. Soh to take this question. Two thousand five hundred and twelve, that's the median number. Number of job seekers, five hundred, two hundred, two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. As for wages, earnings, for those earning below three thousand, they are either casual job seekers or part-time job workers. And because PWDs, when some of them have to go to medical treatment and they may be recommended by medical doctors to take up jobs that will require less time, say two or three years. But all in all, they, these jobs do comply with the SMW requirement. Two thousand eight hundred, six hundred and eighty-six, that means one hundred and seventy-four unsuccessful cases. Any reason why, Mrs. Soh? I think PWD job seekers would experience some difficulties in seeking jobs, and they may choose jobs as well depending on the package and conditions. So there are a number of factors. I have some time left. Now, two thousand five hundred and twelve cases. Among these cases, how many cases or placements are full-time? Because you talked about part-time placements. Eighty percent of the vacancies are full-time posts. As for the figures you mentioned, we have not categorized the data in that manner. Because for the disabled employees, sometimes they may be recommended by doctors to work for two or three hours only. They might not be able to work for long hours. So they may be engaging in full-time jobs, but the working hours in itself is not long. Mr. Tang, up here. Thank you, Chairman, several questions. One is LWB one oh four about the WITS. On average, workers need to spend four hundred and seventy-two dollars to work across districts. Of course, for those traveling between, say, two districts, that might be the case. But for those living in outline islands, Hua Chuen Mun and Yun Long, the figure would go far beyond this average figure. So by thirty percent or so. So a hundred million dollars have been allocated, and a due-track approach has been adopted. In six months' time, will you review the situation? In particular, for the four particular districts, can you increase the amount to eight hundred or even a thousand dollars or make it a full reimbursement basis? Next question, already covered by Mr. Wong, but I, Mr. Wong Kwok-hing, but I need to follow up on it. One oh seven, about industrial accidents. Now, on the face of it, I mean, we're all aware that in the construction industry, there are a lot of high-profile accidents. But very often, occupational drivers do suffer from possible occupational accidents as well. In one oh seven, annex four, there is a non-industrial undertaking fatal accidents. And there is a type of fatal accident striking against or struck by moving object. So that is about non-industrial undertaking fatalities. Does it mean traffic accident? Please clarify. And you still have time to address on this point. That is on improving the health of occupational drivers. Last question, many policies involved funding. There are sixteen staff for the trade union registration. Will you consider putting more resources in terms of manpower and so on to promote class negotiation rights? Now, Secretary.
The four hundred-plus dollar average, this is from the CNST. Whether sufficient or, whether six hundred is sufficient or not, it's hard to say. For those working within the district, the amount is more than sufficient. For those working across districts, say from Hua Chuen Mun to Yun Long, and Hong Ham to Kaolong City, they are crossing districts. But in terms of implementation, it's very difficult to distinguish between them. I'm sorry to interject, I help workers fill in the form, but in fact, they are required to put in the actual transport fares. If you have conducted surveys, you will know whether the amount exceeds four hundred and seventy-two. That will involve a lot of administrative work, and this will also pose a lot of challenges. For example, domestic helpers, well, they may not work every day of the week, so on and so forth. And a lot of administrative work is involved. We want to keep it simplified. Six hundred dollars, that's the subsidy. I agree that for someone traveling to and from Tin Shui Wai, every, each month, it will be one thousand dollars or so spent on traveling. So six hundred dollars is in fact quite a large amount of subsidy. But I agree with the member that in terms of this WITS, we should review and consider the way forward in order to better help those employees or those who want to go back to the workforce. Mr. Tang, you have in fact asked a number of questions. If you ask so many questions, they won't be able to answer the remaining questions.
My answer is very simple. We have adopted a due-track approach. Our next step is that we'll keep an open mind. Please allow some room for us to do our work. Commissioner. On class negotiation rights, it has nothing to do with the number of staff members of the Trade Union Registration Board. Well, it's not about manpower. May I continue? Chairman.
I hope members would understand that once you legislate on class negotiation rights, we need to put our heads together and discuss the matter, but it doesn't mean a conclusion can be reached. If we engage the employer side, it might hurt labor relations. In the past, in Hong Kong, we not have class negotiation rights. But in terms of labor relations comparing to other neighboring places, our situation is quite stable. For example, in Europe, in France, workers have class negotiation rights. But it doesn't mean the situation is stable. So we don't think the class negotiation right is the penis here to the question. Mrs. Sin Chung Kai. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Albert Ho's question on injecting funds in the ERB. Altogether, the total funding will stand at seventeen billion dollars. My question for the Secretary is what form of investment will be carried out in future? I see that there won't be any investment committee for the board of directors, but on appointing officials on, to the, or members to the ERB, you look at what employees has to be, have to be retrained. But now, for the fifteen billion dollars, will you pass it over to, for investment purpose or what?
Thank you, very smart. We really want to invest it in the exchange fund of the Hong Kong MA for the sake of higher interests. We are negotiating with the Hong Kong MA, and it's just like the CCF. We hope that we can have some long-term income from interest so as to preserve the capital. We are unanimous on this, thank you very much. Mr. Sin Chung Kai, no further question. Next.
Dr. Fernando Zhou. My question relates to reply oh eight seven, employment for the disabled. According to the administration, two thousand five hundred and twelve successfully got jobs, and job seekers, two hundred, six hundred eighty-odd. So the success rate is over ninety percent. Very surprising. So I'd like to know whether that is true or not. So during the period, two thousand eight hundred sixty-five asked you for assistance in job placement, and you've successfully placed two thousand seven hundred, two thousand five hundred and twelve. Commissioner. In twenty twelve, we had received nine thousand three hundred and sixty-nine job vacancies. So the figure is correct. A member asked a question which we didn't have the opportunity to answer. For instance, persons employed, most of the vacancies are full-time jobs. Over eighty percent of them are full-time vacancies. Let's see if Mrs. Leng, Mrs. Leng has something to add.
The number of placements. A person might be registered more than once because we talk about successful placements. So we're not saying that we have successfully placed two hundred and fifty-twelve job seekers among two thousand eight hundred odd people who come for assistance. So please tell us the exact number of persons who seek help from you, and also the number of job seekers with disabilities who were successfully placed. And the manpower in your unit. So you received two thousand eight hundred odd applications, so is it value for money? We have eighteen officers responsible for job placement. So the government employs PWDs. I believe among the two thousand five hundred odd, some of the placements are for the government. The government has refused to adopt a quota system. Rest of the community has been asking for a certain indicator. According to the administration, two percent of its workforce are PWDs. But what about public bodies and public-funded bodies? They do not have any indicators. There is no indicators for them to employ a certain percentage of, or to fill certain percentage of the positions with PWDs. I'd like to know when the government will do this. Anyone from the administration? PS.
Thank you. Regarding employment for PWDs, this is a very important issue. Under the COP, there is a task force to discuss groups with special needs. And that task force attaches a lot of significance to this issue and is exploring how it can offer help. Can you give us a timetable? We have to look to the timetable of the task force because many, all departments have to report to the task force. But we have discussed this for years. And even the CE promised in his manifesto that tax concessions can be considered for enterprises that are willing to employ PWDs. And this is the support of many political parties and organizations. So when can this be implemented? PS, as I said, according to the minutes of the first meeting of the task force, it's already started its discussion and employment among PWDs. Relevant bureaus and departments will report to the task force on issues that they are required to explore. Well, these are entirely within your control. These are government or public-funded bodies. You give them a guideline and then they You give them a guideline, and then they can start it tomorrow. Please do not drag your feet. We almost have full employment in the community. And therefore, you must give more job opportunities to PWDs. Mr. Paul Ze.
Reply number one six one. And there is a paragraph in the secretary's speaking, speech, paragraph twenty-three, spending fifteen billion dollars for employee retraining. According to the secretary, a three-point-four unemployment rate is close to unemployment, and there are jobs or vacancies that cannot be filled. Given the situation, what are the objectives of spending so much on employees' retraining? Is it our intention to further lower the three-point-four unemployment rate? What is our direction? The money looks very handsome, but are we going to use the interest of the capital? And what measures would there be to further lower our unemployment rate?
Yes, to inject fifteen billion dollars into the ERB, I already replied to Mr. Shin Chung Kai's question. The intention is to provide long-term stable income for the ERB. We have started our discussion with the Hong Kong MA for investment of the money into the exchange fund to ensure that there is stable income, which will not be available from the market or from banks. We hope that by means of interest from the capital, we can support the operation of the ERB. The fifteen billion dollars will provide long-term support for the ERB. And given the low unemployment rate, does that mean that ERB has no role to play? No, because there is a mismatch between employees and vacancies. New arrivals, ethnic minorities, and other groups have to enhance their employability and skills. I'm talking about the grassroots workforce in particular. We must upgrade their skills to tie in with our economic development. There are about one hundred and thirty thousand places this year. Half of them will be employment-packed. That means for training courses will be offered where there are vacancies available. For instance, training courses for security guards and cleaners, there are jobs or vacancies available. As soon as you graduate, you can start work. And also carers in RCHs. So there will be assistance for new arrivals, women, and rehabilitated persons, ethnic minorities, so on and so forth. The ERB hasn't seen its role diminishing because of the low unemployment rate. Rather, it will help to perfect the quality of our workforce and to deal with the mismatch between jobs and people. That three-point-four percent unemployment rate, I think that should have included unemployment among women and new arrivals. Is that correct? Now, if three-point-four percent of those moves regarded as a virtually full unemployment situation, what more do we want to add? Well, there are job seekers and also skill enhancement. There are people who are working, but they would like to enhance their skills. For instance, for the printing industry, from traditional skills, the industry is moving to IT operation. Some workers have to upgrade their skills. Even a waiter in a restaurant will need to learn IT skills. So these are simple courses to upgrade the skills of our workforce, and some are packed to job vacancies. Although the unemployment rate is three-point-four percent, we're talking about over a hundred thousand persons, including young people and middle-aged persons. Yes, it should all, we should be our target to receive retraining. But if you have upgraded the skills of the grassroots workers, do you have sufficient people to fill up the vacancies vacated by these workers with enhanced skills? Yes, of course. These courses must be vacancies-packed, otherwise employers will not ask for reemployment. But for domestic helpers and also nannies or postnatal carers, well, these are very specific markets where retraining is needed. One colleague has indicated his intention to speak, but he's not around. This is for the first round. Mr. Jung, do you intend to speak or not? Because I want to ensure that we can end by six forty, as planned. Anyone intending to speak in the second round? Dr. Fernando Jung, I saw your hand. You are among the three? Because I don't want colleagues to ask to speak for the fourth or third rounds, and then we may overrun something I don't want to see. All right, anyone hoping to speak in the second round? A colleague has pressed his button, but he is not here. I must reserve some time for him. I don't know whether he'll come back. So for the remaining time, all right, I'll be very strict, four minutes each. Chen Yun Han, Li Chai Yan, Tang Ka Biu. Ms. Chen Yun Han, thank you, Chairman.
Well, I will follow your guideline, Chairman. In the head thirty-one of the LD to support the work of the standard working hours committee. In twenty thirteen fourteen, points to note, that means they are prepared to work on this area. The reply by the administration to me just now was really empty. Yes, the committee will discuss issues, but there must be also a debate in the community. You should not follow the case of the the OLLA, OLLA. Because you must have money for a discussion in the community, otherwise you won't have that under head thirty-six of the LD. Secretary. One of the functions of the committee is to promote an in-depth and informed debate in the community regarding the question of standard working hours, because it is a very complicated issue. There must be resources and manpower to do this. And that will include local consultation and also preparation of pamphlets. Well, the committee has not come to any conclusion yet, so there is no question of forming consensus in the community. This is very different from the old age living allowance. Well, you go back to CY's manifesto, he promised to do that. The last term of government did a study with everything. So you want us to wait for another three years after three years? You talk about six important issues to be followed by four important issues. You're just beating around the bush. Since you have already got that, why don't you be practical? Of course, you would say that I won't fall into your trap, Chen Yun Han. But I believe the Manpower Panel will force you to do something. So why don't you follow? Your work plan for twenty thirteen fourteen is good that you have a committee. The question is, you must have a timetable for the work of the committee. Unless you are telling us that you have no intention to do it in this term of LAGCO and this term of government, there is another thing we may have to start, a social movement to force the government to do something. Secretary. When he assumed office, the chairman of the committee met the media and said that he would arrange meetings as soon as possible, and then the meeting would then work out the priorities and also the timetable. The committee will be very keen to press ahead, and I will remind him to do that. I'm sure the Manpower Panel of LAGCO will follow up. I will join the Manpower Panel again in due course. This is a controversial issue. You have included it as an important area in your plan. So why don't you start it? This is not a taboo. In fact, there is plenty of experience. LAGCO and the government have visited overseas jurisdictions on this. Why are you dodging the issue? Is it because you have no intention to do it? Of course, we are not dodging it, or else we would not have set up a committee. We have a report, and we have a good basis. You must allow time for the committee to do its research and study properly. Li Chai Yan. The setting of a committee is for dragging the feet of the government. Another three years, that will be the new term of government already. I don't know whether the secretary is paving the way for his position next term. He may say that since I worked on this in the last term, I should continue my job here so that he will forever be the secretary for Labor and Welfare. I'd like to talk about outsourced workers or workers employed by contractors, not those employed by HIT, not the direct workers. Well, for HIT direct workers, they have time to rest, and they can also have meals at canteen. I feel to see why Mr. Chiu, the commissioner, has had this arrangement for workers to have meals. You can ask the terminal workers, they're there, waiting for the negotiation. They can all tell you that they take their meals while operating the machines. They use their elbow to operate the machines while they are eating. Have you turned a deaf ear to what they say, or you just listen to the employer and not the employees? And for returning to the call of nature, you heard them very clearly that if they wanted to use the washroom, they would be given a sound face, and they had to ask to wait for more than ten minutes. Some of them could not could not wait for that. So if you go there, you will see the soil packs, and then I don't think you want to see them. I'd like to know whether occupational safety and health, or the general responsibilities of employers would include meal breaks and also toilet breaks. If you see any problems, will you prosecute employers for breaching occupational safety and health provisions under general duties? Regarding meal breaks and toilet breaks, and I think they were discussed at the negotiations or during mediation. I think it's agreed that, well, we have put this to the contractors, and they promised to respond positively. And regarding general duties, I ask the deputy commissioner to answer.
Regarding Mr. Li Chai Yan's question, yes, we're very concerned about occupational health and safety at container terminals. For instance, last year, we received information that some drivers or workers had to take their meals while working. After we've received such comments, we reflected to the management. The relevant company issued memorandums asking their contractors to ensure that drivers have, or operators have designated meal breaks, and they should not be required to work during that break. And then there is also a hotline number for complaint in the memo when operators, drivers, or workers have been subject to impolite treatment. They could complain through the hotline. And as for toilet breaks, we will continue to follow up because there is a lot of room for improvement. I'm asking whether you can take enforcement under the occupational safety and health legislation, general duties?
Yes, there are the general duties, but then the general duties provisions aren't that specific. As I have said, we're doing all our best to seek improvements together with the contractors. Well, what's the use of the legislation if the provision about general duties is so vague? Your time is up. You have to follow this up elsewhere. Mr. Deng Ka Biu, I asked three questions, but there wasn't sufficient time to answer all the questions. What about career drivers? There were thirty fatal accidents, including things like being knocked down by movable objects. Does that include the accidents involving career drivers? No, the thirty-plus cases do not include the career drivers. It includes those that are working by the roadside, so not including career drivers. Then that's very bad, because every month we have one to two cases, fatal accidents. Are you going to spend resources to collect the data? You don't really have to spend too much because you just asked the police. You mean career drivers fatally killed during work? There are also other trades in which they have long working hours and as a result of their poor working conditions, they don't have a proper meal break that's not confined to the container terminal operators. For every crew, again, they have to be on shift for twenty-four hours before getting a break of twenty-four hours. So what are you going to do to enhance occupational safety and health? Mr. Leng. Statistics concerning career drivers and those involved in accidents. Generally, we have been classifying the data according to occupations and trades. Now, we have career drivers in many different trades, so we haven't got the breakdown. We haven't got a way to collect such data. As to the second question asked by Mr. Tang, we'll go back to consider it. And afterwards, are you going to use resources to respond to our request? For career drivers, whether there is a clear employer-employee relationship? Would you be collecting data concerning drivers could die during the course of work? You didn't do it, you haven't done it, are you going to do it? So they haven't done it, you want to know whether they would consider doing it in the future? Commissioner or the secretary should be the one to answer the question. Are you going to consider it in the future? Are you going to consider it? Yes. When are you going to give us a reply? So you want them when it will be ready? When are you going to give us the reply as to your consideration? It was in the first half of the year. Any other questions? Now, two members would like to ask questions for the third time, two minutes each. Chen Yun Han. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I am persistent. I want to go back to the expenditure head. You say that I'm trying to trap you, but I'm still about standard working hours. Please give us a timetable. Do you really have to make us to wait for three years? Would you like to sit on the file? I don't think this is your style. We have had a lot of study when to the UK. You can't say that we have to wait for three years. Does it mean that we're to count on fortune? I'm sure you will be procrastinating, and you will suffer from our sort of pressure. Secretary. I think many members are concerned about standard working hours. The committee was formally set up two days ago. It has membership from the labor sector, academia, and the officials. We need to give them time to work. No, tell us about your timetable. What about the sort of milestones? I'm sure the chairman will discuss with the members in relation to the work plan, etc. They've just been set up for, it has just been set up forty-eight hours ago. So we need to give them time so that they can have a timetable and roadmap. When are you going to give us the roadmap and the timetable? Would it be after the first meeting? I was certainly reflect members' aspirations to the chairman. I tell him that you're very concerned, they want to know about the workflow and the roadmap. They have to consult the public. There must be broad consensus. It will trigger public debate. There are bound to be different views, and it's going to be complex. Tell the secretary to have a discuss at the MP meeting. Your time is up. Li Chai Yan. Li Chai Yan. Mr. Leng said that general duties don't cover meal break and toilet break or the entitlement to a toilet break. But I think in the past, when we were told about general duties, we were given to understand that it would be all embracing, covering everything. Now, for the work incentive subsidy scheme, many people have complained that it is a lot of, very troublesome to fill out the form. Even our staff members have to spend more than half an hour and still can't get anywhere. So my question is, are you going to simplify the form? Simplify the application procedure? Are you going to review it and have to done so?
Secretary. When we carry out the due track approach, we will see if there's room for improvement. With the due track system, if you apply on an individual basis, it will be much easier. For the first time, it will be more complicated. If you come to apply again, we believe in the applicant and we demand fewer, less information. Sometimes a person may have a payment slip for a few months and then he hasn't got it and then it will not be easy to get approval and then people will be deterred from application. What about general duties? Would it be so general in nature that it doesn't cover anything at all? Who's going to answer the question, Commissioner?
Let me supplement a point about the application form for the work incentive scheme. Now, we are printing the new forms, just running for two pages. The third page is only a space for signature. That's for application on the individual basis, even for household forms. Again, three pages with one page for the signature. General duties. We say that an employer must provide a safe working environment. So if you haven't got a proper arrangement for toilet breaks, if you haven't got arrangements for a proper meal break, well, we have to check whether such unsatisfactory arrangements would jeopardize the occupational health and safety. Now, it's time to end the session today. Tomorrow, on the twelfth of April, we are going to start our special FC meeting at nine o'clock. We will scrutinize the estimates concerning food and health. Thank you.